We'll call the meeting to order. Is everybody, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
I'd like to start our meeting with a reading of our mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. At the beginning, we always like to open up an opportunity for any remarks from the audience. If anybody does have those remarks, please welcome you up to the podium. Please do state your name and address for the record. Seeing none or hearing none, we'll move on to introduction of some of our guests. Dave Campbell and Michael Fitzpatrick from the Pratt Community College are here. Larry Kleeman and Jackson Kleeman from Reinsen Financial. And then Dr. Nolte has a guest he'd like to introduce as well.
Mr. Paul Lewis, Dodge City Sports Commission would like to thank the college for participation in this Shrine Bowl event. Paul?
Thank you Chairman Presley, trustees, Dr. Nolte. My name is Paul Lewis. I am the chairman of the Dodge City Sports Commission. And as you know, back in June, we recently hosted the 2019 Shrine Bowl. And I wanted to give you a brief report on that and then talk about, for just a minute, about how that all works and how it all comes together and the benefit it is to the community and everything that's going on. So Shrine Bowl week was June 4th through the 8th. Activities started on Tuesday and concluded on, started on Tuesday with band camp. And there was about 160 kids here for band camp. Dodge City Community College provided dorm rooms for all of the, for all of the band camp and the cheer camp members. And so we invaded the campus, or they invaded the campus on Tuesday to begin band camp. Activities wrapped up on Saturday with the All-Star game Saturday night. There was about 4,200 fans, 4,500 fans in the stands for that. Also, the parade Saturday morning. And then a variety of other activities throughout the week. Overall, there were about 300 Shriners and their spouses that came to the community for the, for three, four, or five days. 380 kids between football camp, the football All-Star game, the band camp, and the cheer camp, and about 3,700 family and friends that came into town for the game, for the parade and the game itself. So that equated to about 1,000 to 1,200 room nights in the community over those, over those days. We estimate, we use a national formula, and we estimate that about somewhere over a half million dollars was directly brought into the economy, direct expenditures into the economy for those few days. So it's a significant, it's a significant activity for, for the community. I wanted to thank the Community College for being a great co-sponsor or assistant with this, with this activity. Jacob Ripple is on the Dodge City Sports Commission. The Sports Commission is made up of administrative people from all the governmental entities and some other people in the community that are just interested in trying to make events happen. And the whole concept behind the Sports Commission is it brings people together at the administrator level that are ones that are directly responsible for executing events. So besides Jacob and myself, members from Dodge City Community, Dodge City High School Athletic Department, from Ford County and the city, we all come together and we all sit down at the table and for, to make big things happen in this community, it takes everybody on the same page and everybody working together. And so putting everybody at the table to resolve, to work through issues and to figure out what we can and can't do, that's a good thing. And we appreciate Jake being part of the, being part of the Sports Commission. And we appreciate the support that got from the Community College. You provided dorm rooms. We fed all of the kids here through the dining services here. And we used facilities. We used the dome. We used the football field, practice field. And so we can't make those things happen without everybody coming together and working and being on the same page. And it's a, and it's a big deal. It's important for the community, in my opinion. It's very important for the community because just like, you know, Shrine Bowl, half a million dollars spent in the community. We sponsored, the Sports Commission sponsored, high school 1A state basketball, NEIA opening round softball, two-state golf championships. Seems like I'm forgetting something. But, and then the Shrine Bowl. But there's somewhere between 1.5 and $2 million worth of expenditures came into the local economy because of those events. Oh, the Wild West Bowl's coming up. That's a six-man football All-Star game. That'll be in the fall. And then we'll also do, we've got selected this year to host 1A, 2A state volleyball. And so we're, we're now have something going throughout most of the year at various times. And so what, I think what we're doing is real important for the community. I think it's, it's having a financial impact and it's providing a lot of recognition for the community. And so we thank you for, for your support and your willingness to help us pull something off like the Shrine Bowl. Thank you for Jacob, that's been a real help on things. Oh, and because of Jacob and some others, we're also going to host Region Six Men's and Women's, Men's and Women's, yeah, basketball, Division One basketball here at United Wireless Arena next year. So a lot of good things happening and we have a good team. It's fun to work together. And we're all, we're all on the same page and good things are happening. So thank you for your support and thank you Jacob. And those were the comments that I wanted to make. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you for all your support.
Okay, thank you.
And then Dr. Nolte has a special award he'd like to present.
Theresa Lorna, would you please come up here? Everybody give them a hand, please. They were voted the best daycare center of 2019 by the Dodge City Dating Club. And congratulations to you guys for that. Very much. Well, I already think you're the best anyway, so it's not a big deal. Y'all do a fabulous job. And I've heard that from everybody. The kids are well-treated and well-loved and you guys are wonderful and have done a great job forever. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
So there you go.
Thank you.
Hang that on your wall, please, okay?
Will do, will do.
Do y'all have anything to say? But it really is, it's well-done and well-kept and we're really proud of it. So thank you. Thank you and thank your staffs too, okay?
Will, thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Moving on with, everybody's had their minutes presented to them before and I'd have a motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of June 24, 2019. Regular board meeting, June 25, 2019. So move.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying no. And completion of the agenda. The addition items, the addition of action item F, memorandum of understanding through the power transition program of Pratt Community College. Provisions of the consent agenda, additions, the personnel item number five, number six, and number seven. All the additions, no. I would make a...
I'd like to pull under the personnel, item two, off for discussion.
Item two. Item two, consent agenda, item two of personnel. Any other additions, corrections, changes? Make a friendly amendment to move our action item F up to action item A, which will just address personally the letters as saying, so we don't get confused, but just so we can let those gentlemen probably make their trek back from Pratt sooner. Unless anybody opposes that. Yeah, talk. Motion to adjourn. So move.
One sec.
Motion, one sec. Any further discussion? None, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Reports, the board of trustees, trustees' reports. Jersey Malone, would I say?
I have nothing to report tonight.
I just wanted to, once again, talk about the Child Daycare Center and how proud we are of you. I have a great nephew that goes out there and he would much rather come out there than sometimes stay with grandma, which is why I want children to be. But what you did after you were flooded and you kept out going and the kids were excited even in the different environment was phenomenal. So I appreciate that. And then I did go to our cosmetology and had a pedicure. I said I needed to use that facility. I have now purple toes. And I had the best time ever. And Julie and the students were wonderful. I had, I think it was Bridget and it was just phenomenal. I had fun. Gonna go again, gonna go.
I'm gonna go with me.
You'll go with me? Okay.
Purple toes.
Purple toes!
Is there just a seat there?
That's on TV.
Never mind.
Be sure to get a fundraiser.
fundraiser, oh, fundraiser.
I'll even buy.
Well, on that, Trustee Malone, do you want to reiterate that?
I don't see that.
Anything else to report then?
Me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I, well, I would like to report on that we're working on our strategic plan, but I feel that we're not. So I would hope by next month that I'll have something to report.
Well, we've had several really nice stories and I want to thank Andrea and Scott for the, I don't see Andrea.
I'm over here in this corner. I'm doing my presentation.
Practicing on the report.
We've had such nice reports, the rodeo program and of course, the Shrine Bowl and the story about Dr. Phillips dimping up for us. And so that's really, that's really good and I'm glad. And also Andrea and Dr. Cersei and the reports that we had have picked up on my request for new updated economic impact. And I want to thank you for that. That's, that's going to be a real useful piece of information when we get that. And also in the reports, Dr. Holwerta and Charlene are doing work on the pathways for the high school students. And that's special and I'm very proud of that too. Thank you for that. So there's one other thing that I'm really interested in that we haven't heard much about and I believe it's one of the important things we're doing here that we need to stress more, and that's the testing center. And I would like to see more information about that and the fact that it's available to the community. There are a lot of the tests that are taken for professional situations and careers that don't have to travel out of town. They can do it right here. And I feel that's something we really need to stress. So thank you for the people that are working on that.
Trustee Cool.
I don't have a report.
The chair declines any, the chair that's supposed to be the chair is not here. He declines any statements. I don't have much else to report because Forte Jean hit all the high points. As always, I've really appreciated the reports that we received previous to the meetings. It's great. It spells things out well. Great understanding as to what is going on. And I think the point that you brought up, Forte Jean, about the testing center was well-laid out as to where the directions of that's going and I'm excited to see that myself. Thank you for bringing that forward. President's report, sir.
Yes, sir. I want to start by saying that Scott and I went on a little trip. We actually thought we were going to Louisville, which we did. But we started going to Lexington, right?
Lexington?
Yeah. Anyway, we went the wrong way for about 20 miles, but we figured it all out. But it was, it was quite fun. I have never in my career, I don't think, we went to Skills USA and I have never seen so many excited individuals and so many professional people. It was, it was, how many people were probably there, Scott?
15,000 maybe.
20, yeah, somewhere around 20,000 kids. And the place was packed. And it's amazing, we've had, I guess this is our first person that went to state and then to nationals and did it quite well. But a great experience for both of us and the family and the article was out in the newspaper, but they did, he did a really good job. And so hopefully we'll see a lot more of that with our workforce programs and hopefully others will do well. You know, it's, it's, every state is basically representative. And it's amazing how excited these students get and they all do well. And so it's all about our, it's about our workforce programs and that's, that's very important. And so I look forward to us doing more of that. I think this is the first time ever that we've had something like that. And so I'm glad that we were able to, to help the young men, the family, and so things will go. Jake, get ready for this one. We had a lady from Bugaton call us this morning and basically say her family, well, her name was Lori Hall, was at the water park. You know that deserved, yeah, okay. She called and wanted to thank us. She said they were the most well-behaved football players she has ever seen.
Whoa.
They played with her kids, her, 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 her children and were very nice and very cordial. And she just wanted to call us. She called us this morning and, you know, I like those kind of calls. I really do. So that's a, that's a wonderful thing. And I can promise you, Coach Hooton and all the rest of these coaches have done an absolutely wonderful job. And these, they are the most polite group of individuals I've seen. And I've been doing this for a long time. This group of young men are very, very polite and very cordial and you don't, like you don't hear anything right now going on. All of our eating, so it's just, it's just nice to see that. President's reception is going to be February, August the 16th, and we'll have it at the Diamond Petro. And I just want you all to be aware of, aware of that. The, as you, as you probably already know, Sullivan's is open and they're going to be a great partner. Something that, that interestingly enough, that Glennon and I are not familiar with in the states that we're from, we're not used to prairie dogs. Well, the prairie dogs, the prairie dogs have moved from the Sullivan's area to now we're to the rodeo area. So tell them about that, Ms. Glennon.
Yeah, there are, it's a pretty big infestation. And so we are going to try a device, I looked up on the internet, but it's kind of like a flashlight type, the size of a flashlight. And you stick it in the ground and it's supposed to be sending out vibrations throughout the ground and drive the little critters away. So we're going to see if that works. Want to try non-lethal methods before we do anything drastic. That's, that's going to be the first thing we try.
I hope, I hope we don't drive them over to the golf course.
Well, you would have extra holes to play.
That's a good one.
More opportunities for a hole-in-one, you know? But yeah, I have had to deal with alligators when I was in Tallahassee, when they would get in the retention ponds. But prairie dogs, we didn't have to mess with.
So it's, it's, it's interesting. Never had to deal with prairie dogs, you know?
But they are very, very thick in the, in the arena where the horses would be. So we can't even use tech.
They are bad and dangerous for animals. They're bad in the pastures and they are almost impossible to get rid of. But I said before that we had to take safety.
Yeah. That's what I understand. And I talked to one of my staff today and I said that several years ago, I don't know how long ago it was, that someone came out and did like a sonic boom and drove them away for a while and then they came back. Well, the, the device that, that we're going to try is kind of like similar to that. It's going to continuously send out pulses throughout the ground. I guess maybe it makes the prairie dog think that there's an earthquake or something and they leave. We'll see if it works. If not, we'll get our money back.
So we'll send them, we'll send them other places. We'll put, we'll take them over. Put them over there. So, but they, they, when I first got here, I, we had them, we had them right over there by Sullivan's. And so now they're obviously moved. 59th Annual Dodge City Days is July 25th to August 4th. I know that Andrea and others are involved in the parade. And so we have the football team, I think, marching in the parade or not marching, but walking.
And volleyball will be as well.
Volleyball will be. And then we also have faculty, we have some folks. And then we also have...
Maybe.
We don't know if we have our courtesy card.
I thought it was already here. It's not. It's in Kansas City. So we're hoping it'll be here.
Okay, so we have our courtesy card, which is, which is purple.
It is purple.
Purple. And so we're looking forward to that. And so that's a great thing. Today, interestingly enough, Chris called a meeting and we met with a gentleman that was very interested in talking to us about our diesel program. And so hopefully financially, there's going to be some possibility of money. He came from Nebraska. He represents, it's called Freightliner, Freightliner. And talked to us about, you know, the opportunities with diesel. He just thinks the diesel program, obviously we have one of the best programs in the country or in the state. And so he was very interested in helping us and working with us on that. The thing people, people can't find is diesel mechanics. The other thing they can't find is CDL drivers. And so we have both of those programs. And so he was pretty excited. We thought the meeting would last about 20 minutes. I think it was two hours later we got finished. But he, he was very excited and wants to be on our committee to, you know, our advisory committee. And so those are some things that were going on. And so things are going well, sir.
First working fiscal year, 20 budget.
Yes, and front of you on your desk, or maybe in the handout, is the information that we will be publishing in the paper. Very similar to what we did in the previous years. You will notice that the tax rate is continuing to go down each year just a little bit, so that, that's a good thing. But we will be publishing this and then we will take, I guess we will have a hearing on August the 6th, our meeting at that time. I think the other information in there was presented last month with the exception maybe of the county clerk's budget information. The county clerk submitted a corrected assessment. It did not affect the total assessed values. What was corrected was the new improvements, but that did not affect the overall calculations for the tax rate. The other item that I placed on your desk tonight is our digital sign out on 14th Street. I believe it's up there. If there are any of these designs that you do not like, if you do not like any of these, you're like, that looks terrible. I don't want to see that. Let me know, okay? We're going to try to decide this. We opened the bids today and we hope to present the recommendation at the August 6th meeting as well. So if you have any of these designs, you just don't particularly care for it all, but one, hey, I like that one, then let me know. Mentioned daycare earlier about the flooding. I think that happened like the first few weeks I was here back in October. We determined that that was a result of a conduit that was not sealed properly. Instead of bubbling crud that's coming up, it was bubbling crud, okay? And so we got that sealed and went in there and put in new carbonene and tile and I think it has not flooded since, is that correct?
No.
Hasn't flooded?
No.
Good.
Nope, we've been good. It hasn't lost any since.
Because when you have the little ones on the, on the floor, you do not want, under sanitary conditions. And so we wanted to put, make sure that the flooring was clean. Speaking of cleaning, Service Master has been on the job July 1st and it's been about three weeks. The first week was a little, had some hiccups because all the keys to all the doors to all the offices weren't quite being properly opening and some of the offices didn't get cleaned. I think that's been resolved and we're hearing good compliments now on the services. And windows are getting cleaned and all those type of things.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, they were over in administration building vacuuming it before I came over here today.
I think that's one of the best things for the cleanliness of the campus that's happened in a long time. Really thinks it's a great idea to outsource that.
Well, one last item, and that is we are trying to implement what we're going to call a conquistador companion program. This is a, adopt a student program that's permitted by the NJCAA. It has to be open to all students, not just athletes. A local pastor I know, he sent out a, some information to the Ministry of Alliance. In, at Trinity Valley where we put this into place, we worked through churches and it was a very successful program. This has a lot of benefits to the students because they have like a host family. They don't, they don't stay with the family. The family will just have them over occasion for a meal or something like that, come and support them in events. But it gives a student a support base. And studies are showing if, you know, if a student's coming in spaced from, away from this area, if they have some support, they're more likely to succeed in class. And so that's, you know, it's kind of what we're here for, to help them succeed. And if we can do these things, this won't cost the college anything because it may be some, you know, some forms that we print up that it says very miniscule, the, right of the, I guess, efforts and things like that will be done by the groups, the churches and things like that that participate, the host families. But something that we're just starting and hopefully we can get accomplished and implemented the beginning of the semester.
Dr. Moore?
Yes. You're up.
Vice Cosmetology Board Amendment.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Last month, Dean Ossis presented this amendment to the Cosmetology Handbook and it was accepted pending some revisions. So Ryan and I met with Julie Taylor and Tina Priscino and Kathy Falcon a couple of times in the past month. And one of the, one of the topics for discussion was the revisions to this document. So one thing that we did do is put a heading at the top of it, approved assessable fines by KBOC. We changed some phrasing at the last sentence of the first paragraph so that it was clear that violations on the station on the salon floor would be paid by all students on the floor, not all students in the building. And it's our hope that these revisions are to your satisfaction.
And this was, we'd already approved as the last one's meeting. We appreciate you writing this back in. Does anybody have any feedback or changes, recommendations? I appreciate them.
I thought they would.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf, PR marketing update.
Good evening. Justin's going to start the PowerPoint, but every, each one of you received the PowerPoint. And I will field questions at the end of the presentation if you have any. My entire team is here. Justin Wilson, he prepared the PowerPoint. Lance is doing video and then Scott is the writer. As you know, it takes a team to get through life and they definitely are a great team to have for marketing and PR. I am starting my fourth year, actually, June 1. I started my fourth year as Director of Marketing and Public Relations. So I know you've seen this, so I'm going to highlight some things that are on here as well. As President Nolte said, we start Dodge City Days. We've really invested a lot of time, energy, and effort participating in Dodge City Days. Within the next three weeks, we are going to participate in the Dodge City Days Parade, the Arts and Crafts, I guess, Arts and Crafts Fair at the mall. We will sponsor a rodeo roundup gold buckle meal. We will also, so that'll be it for Dodge City Days. As school then begins within three weeks, those activities plus the presidential reception, which are all invited to a Diamond Petro. And then on Monday, August the 12th, we will host a welcome back luncheon. Um, and this is something that we do on the first day of faculty in service and then again at Christmas. So those are some of the activities that we facilitate, we organize, we participate in. Some other things not listed that I tried to attend or somebody from my team would be the different chamber coffees. I do know that some of the VPs and other faculty and staff have attended. Uh, last week, I know several of us went to meet the new chamber president, Anna, um, at the Depot Theater. So chamber coffees are important. Chris has gone, Christie has gone from HR. On August the 27th, we will be hosting a chamber coffee as well over at the Harsh Burger Family Hall. Thank you. So we are going to host a chamber coffee then as well. Um, we also do attend different chamber ribbon cuttings. We attend economic development meetings, taxing entities. We just did one video a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago. Um, I was, uh, reached out this week and they want to have a second video, um, with our taxing entities. The pictures that you see, top one is the parade. Uh, the center picture is the business luncheon. That, that was just in June. Um, and at the bottom is the chamber banquet. We sponsor a table, so we decorate a table. And everybody leaves with fun prizes at the end of that evening. Uh, events, we promote different events throughout the year. Uh, Justin does all of the graphic design work. Uh, and these are just a sample of what he does. As you can see, the different graphic design work that he does. Uh, once an event is, we have a design, it goes to social media. We try to put it on Facebook as an event. We write news stories, radio spots. I put it on the different calendars in the community and our CVB. So those are some of the events, uh, that we host. Marketing requests, Justin for the most part manages all of these requests. Now, I want you to understand that the numbers could be a little bit skewed because not everybody goes in, like myself, and request marketing requests. I might say, hey, let's do this story. We do this story. In the course of the year though, the design requests are a hundred, probably pretty close to accurate. Justin has designed 226 design requests. Um, that would be the different flyers that you see. We've had different media requests, business cards, and as you can see, it, it goes now. By having Justin do the requests on in-house, it does save us money, time and effort. As the school year begins, uh, they are hiring new employees, so we will be putting out new employee bios. Um, I know Josh, our sports information director, he is, um, there's new bios out on the new coaches. Um, so we will have bios on our new faculty and staff that are hired as well. The media requests are multifaceted, like I said. Um, once a story is submitted, we, I send that out to our media contacts. We put it on social media. And whatever it's relevant to, I try to send it to that entity. We put things on the calendar, both the CVB and the Chamber Commerce. I've really gotten into doing things with Chamber, the Chamber eBlast because that hits all of the Chamber members as well. Uh, we like doing Facebook Live. We found that those have been very effective with, uh, the concerts that we have on campus throughout the year. All of the news stories are then also shared with, but not limited to, the Globe, KSN and KWCH. Social media, so I'm sure you've read through all this social media. It gets very tedious and it's very, um, specific to the, the age that you are. Um, so our social media continues to grow. Our Facebook engagement has, uh, it's growing. Um, but as you can see at the bottom, only half the American teens use Facebook, okay? So what do they use? Where are they going to go find information? Uh, Louis has done a great job using Twitter, Instagram. Uh, we, we put everything on Facebook. My team though has started using Twitter as well. And we do have several followers. Depending on the material that you want out there, you have to vary it from platform to platform. So Twitter is popular amongst our, our students as well. YouTube, this is where all of the board meetings go. All of our videos that Lance has started doing, those go on YouTube. So that, it's a great place. People log on to YouTube. I know my two boys, they watch YouTube. Whatever they want to figure out or learn about, they go straight to YouTube. So, and it says that 68% of the YouTube users, they watch YouTube to help make a purchase decision. Um, so we try to put our videos on YouTube as well that we are moving towards. LinkedIn, um, is something that President Nolte last year said, Andrea, we've got to get on LinkedIn. So I've been on LinkedIn. I post things. Now LinkedIn is geared more towards business and industry. I know Chris, she, um, uses LinkedIn faithful, faithfully as well. Um, so you can go in and share and I tell you between all of our, whoever has a Facebook page on our campus, we are very good about sharing. Going in and sharing the information. Um, and so we're getting the word out and we're doubling the, who's getting it? Okay, so we are going to start Instagram, um, August 1st. This is going to be a new platform for us. My team is currently in the process of putting on pictures. Instagram is more picture oriented. Facebook is more story and picture. So we are going to focus to on Instagram. We are wanting to schedule Tuesday and Thursday posts. So that is going to be a consistent and we are working towards that as, as we speak. Uh, traditional media. So every year we have, um, our yearly contracts and so the Globe, uh, we're trying to negotiate, get the best bang for our buck. Um, so this year, uh, the bullet points show what we have with the Globe. Um, this, uh, in a year from May to May, as you can see, Scott has written 84 news stories. Um, and those have been published on our website. Um, they also, uh, I pick and choose, but I also put news, uh, in the KACC newsletter, um, throughout the year. They want each college to submit different articles. So I pull some of Scott's articles and we put those in there as well. Um, and this spring you saw that we started the Conquistador Magazine. Lance and Scott, they are graduates and alums from, um, the journalism program here. And they go through the archives and we try to blend the new with the old. So I think they've had fun, um, putting those together as well. Uh, more traditional media, uh, radio, we use, um, Rockin' M Media and South Wind Plains 98.1. Um, I had a little hiccup with 98.1, um, but we're moving to repair that relationship. So Rockin' M and we also have been using, um, the, the college radio station. Uh, Lance has really been utilizing, uh, their station and he has, uh, done, it's since November. He has put together 29 radio ads and he has done eight different interviews. And we just look to double, to double that. I know today he finished, uh, a radio spot for Doris Donovan's Quick Book Class. Um, all of our, it's, it's open to anybody on campus, campus wide who would like to submit a request, send us an email. We want to help promote whatever it is. Uh, this bottom part, KSN and KWCH, those are the two television stations that we use. Um, we also, as you are aware, um, work with Channel 8. Um, and I know that Abby from the city is working on trying to put together a schedule of programming. Um, but I think she's got that figured out. Lance has it on religiously every day to make sure that it's the board meetings that we promote. Um, we just did a video two weeks ago, uh, with Benny Mathia. July is Minority Mental Health Month, I believe. Um, so, uh, my team, they did a quick video on that, so that is out there. This is our new commercial.
We didn't come here to sit at the desk. We came here to work. This is hands on.
I see my future job.
I'm building my future and I'm not going into debt doing it.
Um, that is our new commercial, Method Production, out of Wichita did that. The theme, I know you couldn't hear it, is this is my classroom. Um, I've been in contact with them. Tomorrow we are having a conference call. We would like for them to come out and do an overall general commercial of the campus. Um, that one was specific with Ryan and Workforce. Um, it was two days of filming and it's a pretty intense two days of filming. And if you would love to come out and see what they do and how they do it, I will, you're more than invited. Some different internal marketing that we do, um, like I said, the welcome back luncheons. Um, we have a T-shirt. It's our parade T-shirt. Uh, this Thursday from 2:00 to 3:00, we're having an ice cream social, which is campus wide. The presidential, uh, reception, we do a mug, we do cookies and cocoa. Um, we've helped participate with the Conx birthday celebrations. So those are a few things. Uh, the one thing when we rebranded with our new academic logo, um, Justin has worked extremely hard on keeping the same brand across the campus. Um, whatever flyers, whatever banners he makes, we really try to stick with the same brand identity standards. Uh, making sure that it has a, a purpose, making sure that it, it is just consistent. So we feel that that's very important. Um, we've also, I know Jake has worked with, uh, Justin on trying to keep the same brand with athletics as well. Even though it has a different, I mean, he, there's a conquistador. I mean, it costs a lot of money to go in and rebrand, especially athletic wise. So we, um, so Justin has worked on the font and so we try to keep it consistent with the academic as well. Cost and time savings, like I said, everything that our team does, um, it is saving us time, energy and money. Um, everything that we do, we are trying to keep, uh, the same message. This is my classroom. You can do it here. Community wise, it's all local. The last thing, when, however, at the bottom, um, we are able to, if, once people make requests, if we want changes or updates, Justin is able to, uh, update those and have a quick turnaround time. And finally, the new initiatives that I had mentioned, I know Instagram already. Uh, the second one is digital marketing. I put in a request because digital marketing is one thing that we have not dabbled in. And as we know, um, young people are constantly on their phone. So I'm working with the company that did our academic logo and, uh, our website. And they are going to put together a plan for digital marketing. So I will be pulling in Louis and admissions to help with that direction, um, that we are going to go. And in the last, and the last one are our campaigns. We're trying to each year come up with one or two main themes, um, that we're able to take from radio to print, to stories and just try to keep the message consistent. That is the PowerPoint presentation, but if you have any questions, I would love to have my team answer or I can answer.
I appreciate that, Andrea. I think it's great. I mean, it drives home the point that the information is out there. We're doing a much better job, which is in response to a lot of feedback we've heard over the, you know, previous years. I've been on the board at least, that, well, we want to, you know, the public wants to hear what's going on. We're trying to get it out there. So if you're choosing not to hear it, then sometimes it's just a choice not to hear it. I'm most intrigued as to how you can keep, cause there's a comment on there in the, on about YouTube, that two minutes is the key to maximize the impact on that. So I'm really intrigued as to how you edit this meeting down to that two minutes.
Lancey is the, the master of that. But you know, but it's interesting because people do lose interest. Like, so we are very conscious of when we do videos, you know, what do we want included? Just like Benny Mathia, I mean, it, it has to be very specific into the corner or they lose their interest. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I watched that and it was very well done. And to get her to do something in two minutes.
Well, it was many retakes, but what we did is I put it on a teleprompter and so it was all right there. So she, yeah. So there's a little, some tricks that we, we do as well. Anything else?
Well, you've also, you've also interviewed all the, the county, the city, the USD as well as myself.
The taxing entities, we did that over in the admissions building. VP Taman was very gracious to let us use, um, the student union. We are looking to do, um, the second video, probably within the next couple of months and just show that we are all, we are partnering, just like Paul Lewis was here. You know, it takes all of us to be, to work together to show that we're working together, I think is the, is the big, big key too. So, yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Moving on, if nobody else has anything. First tonight, moving to our action items. We'll start out, as I mentioned earlier, action item F, memorandum of agreement of electrical power technology with Pratt Community College. Dr. Moore, would you like to present that?
I'd like to start by thanking Andrea for giving me the wonderful segue of talking about partnerships. Um, this MOU is a good example. I think of a positive partnership, the way that we can, uh, work with each other beyond our own campus uh, to, to best serve our, our students and, and provide them with the opportunity to fulfill their educational and vocational goal. I would like to talk mostly just about the process of how this MOU, this memorandum of understanding came to be. Now, after the April board meeting, administration started meeting with Pratt. Uh, the Pratt administration did visit our campus and we gave them chores. We had discussions about how to proceed with this. Now more recently, uh, Dr. Fordy, myself and Dean Osmus communicated, uh, through teleconference with Dr. Fitzpatrick, who's the academic vice president of Pratt and their CFO as well. And I think Dave, you were there also participating and had a conversation about, uh, the attached draft. Suggested some revisions and then communicated again later to finalize, finalize those revisions and, and here we are. I, I'd like to ask if you have any questions, uh, Dr. Fitzpatrick, as well as Professor Campbell, uh, would be able to answer questions as well.
What is the cost to our college?
The cost to our college is minimal. Uh, we'll be continuing to provide, well, Dr. Fordy, I see he's gonna.
Does he have a, other than minimal?
In terms of direct dollars?
Yes.
I'll get to look that up. I don't know that there's going to be a significant, a cost involved in this. Uh, we've already got the equipment. I mean, other than just utilities that were already associated with the program down there, you know, in the classroom. The, the technology support, we're continuing to collect a technology fee from the students. So actually I think we'll probably still maybe make money on that.
Okay, where does the revenue go?
Goes into the college fund. It goes into, the technology fee goes into the technology fund.
Well, I mean, does Pratt get paid?
Well, Pratt will get paid for their coursework. If the student takes general education courses through, through Dodge City, then Dodge City will get that, that, those credit hours and that, and those tuition fees.
Well, who's teaching the course here? Is it Pratt or us?
Are you talking about the?
The power.
The power. We talked about Pratt.
The power lighting program will be taught through Pratt, the general education courses will be taught through Dodge City Community.
Okay, so what are we paying for the?
The instructor. The instructor will be compensated through Pratt Community College and not Dodge City Community.
Okay, and the revenue for the tuition goes to Pratt?
The revenue for the tuition towards the electrical lighting power program will come back to Pratt.
Okay. And are there any scholarships for Ford County students?
We had talked about that and I don't know exactly where we landed on that decision.
Thank you.
I think we had decided that might be an issue to award a scholarship to a student attending, a book attending at another community college in, in the state. You understand what I'm saying? They're, they're actually enrolled in taking the class through Pratt. I don't know if legally that we can give them a scholarship to do that. Well, they're actually attending both. It could be. Taking academic classes.
On the academic side, we could.
Yeah, on the academic side, certainly we could.
On the academic side, we could. On the, on the, on the lighting program, Pratt could do that. Yeah, and that's, that's done all of, all over the country. Yeah. If they're taking the academic side, would be, would be our responsibility.
Yesterday during our workstation room, we were excited about this, kind of like a merger of being able to share responsibilities and help each other out and working with other colleges. So we appreciate that.
Well, it's, you know, a lot of states, they call it flagship. You know, you can't do all the programs yourself. So certain institutions will do different kinds, like what we're going to do with Garden City with the, with the fire, the fire academy. They have all the, they have all the equipment and so that'll, that'll help too. Except, you know, we're, our goal, I want us to do a very, very good job in our nursing program. I want us to do a very, very good job in our diesel programs and things like that. Things that we need to be doing a better job with.
And this does provide students in our area, particularly those students who are in, in progress through the EPT program, to be able to complete that program without leaving home, so to speak. In terms of flagship being, Dr. Nolte has said before that, as we know, Pratt's EPT program is one of the strongest in the state. And Michael was going to talk a little bit about their partnerships with other institutions across the state.
Yes, long prior to my arrival at Pratt Community College, I came in 2015, they had approved, had set up a similar partnership exactly like this, modeled with this MOU with Coffeyville Community College. That led to another opportunity when I first arrived to partner with WSU Tech. It was W, Wichita Area Technical College at the time. And that allowed us to partner with Westar Energy and Wichita Public Schools. And what we did in that regard was open four seats for the high school junior, senior to come into the program and have that avenue to a pathway for the Centerville 155 monies and then 16 seats for general population of students coming in. And very similar, the students take the general ed courses there, at Coffeyville, they take them at WSU Tech, and then they complete the degree and go to the certificate accordingly. And then we would look for the same opportunity here at Dodge.
I think it's reassuring to know that we're, we're dealing with people who are expert in this kind of partnership.
And they are, really. What makes your, what makes your power line program any different than the one we were running?
Well, I can speak to the historical aspects. I believe that your power lineman program started with a partnership with Pratt and kind of deviated within the first couple of years of that partnership establishing. Dave Campbell has been our director since, what, 1990?
2010?
2008, okay. So he's been the director since 2008 and what we've seen long prior to my arrival and presumably long after I'm gone, that he will continue to expand the power lineman industry within the state and serve as a national benchmark. So the difference is, in my, my opinion, is that he's a thought leader within the industry. He has years of experience to drive the industry forward and industry partners on advisory board in Coffeyville, Wichita, and on the Pratt campus look to him of where the direction of it going. So, for example, he introduced drone technology and how do you provide infrastructure supports and implement weather, storm damage, things of that nature. Similarly, he's looking at how do we do journey out programs for small rural cooperatives where it's difficult to have those opportunities for journeying and lineman programs. What's advantageous about this is it provides the training completely 100% online. They're working in the profession and they go through the training online, they journey out accordingly. Similarly, when we look at the industry job placements, we hover between 94 and 98% depending on the year. And oftentimes what we find is at the completion of one year, our students are leaving with their credentials. So they do a fall, spring, and a summer internship, and then they are hired into the industry. After five years with just a certificate, they're making about $100,000, which is a great return on investment. For those individuals who do come back to campus, they can complete their associate's degree, associate's of applied science. For those who do not, they have an opportunity to complete their degree online while they're working full-time. Another bridge that Dave has introduced is a transition-type program for individuals across the country who want to enter the lineman program. They take the online portion and come for about a three to four-week summer intensive climb sessions and, and safety protocols and things of that nature. And so when we look at other programs across, not just the state of Kansas, but across the country, we're being looked at as, what are they doing at Pratt? We're calling, we're asking the, they've outgrown their job fair, for example. We've gotten industry partners from Texas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Missouri, coming to the job fair. And what that allows them to do is say, I want to talk to number eight, 16, and four. I want to interview them now and I'm going to offer them a job today. Because I've seen them climb, I've seen their skill sets and things of that nature.
How many power line technician programs are there in the state?
In the state, including Dodge, there are three. Manhattan, Manhattan Technical College, Dodge City, and then Pratt.
And nothing you do is proprietary, right?
In terms of proprietary, or you define that.
Well, I mean, it's the way you do it. As far as confidentiality or anything of the nature?
Um, no, we're not, I wouldn't say we're doing anything but trying.
Okay, thank you.
How many students do you have, general?
Typically on Pratt's campus, we have 40. And on Coffeyville's campus, we typically have 20 to 28, depending on the day. And we have a limited seat in the Wichita area of 20. 16 regular population students and four high school students.
And our students that are here, around 20, will they be taught at our campus down at Dodge?
Yes. And what we're looking at doing is a variety of different models, the higher end, the right instructor, and that's one of the advantageous aspects of our program. Dave has a wealth of knowledge across the state, as I shared earlier. And, for example, Jerry Thompson was hired shortly after I arrived in 2015. I had no, absolutely no experience with lineman programs, other than I know my lights are on or they're off and I'm thankful that they keep them on. And I don't say that jokingly. Look at what's happening in New York and other places with their technologies. Jerry Thompson, 36 years in the industry, no teaching experience, came in, was our Dennis Lass Teacher of the Year award. Won that. First year, no teaching experience. That speaks volumes comparatively to faculty. The next year, David had, was awarded that. This year, Jeff Hoffman, who was at your last board meeting, guess what he earned or was awarded this year? The Dennis Lass Teacher of the Year award. And it's the dedication to the practice of training these young men and women who come into the career field, some with knowledge-based because of their family history, some with, I just want that money, or some, I want the experience, I want the excitement. Whatever they're there for, they take these young men and women where they're at and help them achieve what they have difficulties achieving on their own. And it's just, I cannot speak enough good things about what they do. It makes my job very, very simple. And when Dr. Nolte and I had our conversation, just tangentially at the Higher Learning Commission, I was like, yes, let's, let's do this. I had a lot of respect for Dr. Nolte and what he's done here at Dodge City and getting to know Jane and colleagues. It's just a great partnership in my estimation of things.
Any other questions?
Comment? I think it's a great thing and we're going to be doing more of this in the future. I see it as a real plus for us.
Council curbs any comments that are in your attached letter?
No.
If there's a resolution before you, entertain any action that you take upon it.
Most to approve the MOU EPT program with Pratt Community College?
motion by trustee director.
Second?
Second, by trustee director.
The, a few years ago, I think Pratt had really a lot of troubles with the nursing program. I don't know what happened to it. We were having troubles with ours too. We didn't give up on it. We worked on it and made it part of this college, which we're supposed to do. I think that we gave up on the line, power line technician program. And I think this is something that the college is supposed to be doing and should be doing. So I think we should not enter into this agreement and try to build our program to the bet, to one that is better than this.
Well, I think this is a way to get us back on track. You know, maybe a chance for us to, to find out how to do, what we need to do. This partnership with Pratt is a three-year agreement. And once we've done that, if we feel confident enough that we can take over, do our own program, then that's fine. But we've got students who are in the program now and need to complete the program and we evidently didn't have the ability to finish them up here as, as it was. It didn't seem to me. So I don't know whether we didn't have the right instructor or, or, I know we had the right equipment, because we've got a lot of equipment. But I don't, I don't know, we just weren't doing the job that we probably should have been doing.
I echo that, or trustee attorney Warren. We have to finish out educating the students that we got in the program and this is a great partnership to establish that. I think the proven track record, which you spoke to, well, sir, to not only be doing well, but excelling and growing in partnerships that you've already formed with other reputable institutions across the state. It's, we're not entering into a questionable situation, I don't feel. And so I do appreciate your willingness here.
And like I said, I'm very appreciative of the opportunity, I think, anytime that you can provide, exemplar level of service through a partnership, it's much more advantageous than just solo islands of isolation.
Well, if we limit it to three years and learn enough to do it well, then I wouldn't have the objection. But we'll see.
That would be for you all to discuss in three years. I'll sit out there and see. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Hearing none, thank you. Thank you.
I want to give you all a little token of our appreciation. Take it home with you.
Now, would you tell your trustee, Mr. Dwayne, hello from Dodge City?
I will, I will.
I enjoy you.
I bet you do.
And he was just voted in as our chair of the board of trustees last night, so he's going to serve as a year.
Bless you guys as hard.
Yes, this is going to be a fun year.
Definitely.
It was. So I hate to be rude, but I do appreciate this and you will follow up with this at a later point.
Please put that on your desk.
Thank you, gentlemen, both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thanks.
Now, moving from action item F to A, memorandum of understanding with fire science program with Garden City Community College. Dr. Orwell?
Thank you. I have neglected twice now to mention my presenting these in, instead of Ryan. Ryan, our dean of workforce, is attending a conference in Wisconsin with his division chair, Jeff Cole, the NC3 conference. So I appreciate your, your patience with me. This is also a memorandum of understanding, this time with Garden City Community College. Dean Osmus and Dean Pfeifer, the dean of workforce at Garden City, have met to put this together and it has been reviewed by Glenn Curbs. It offers you a few more details in terms of the curriculum in fire science that Garden City offers. However, the basic terms are much the same. Students will earn their, our DC3 students will earn their Gen Eds with us and the fire science forces with Garden City Community College. There's a sharing of facilities and other resources.
How many does Garden City have enrolled?
You know, I don't have the answer to that question. Within this part of the state, however, they are the one fire science program that is still existing. I understand they're forming partnerships with Colby and Seward as well. Garden City are very similar to ours. The other fire science programs in the state are at Barden, Butler, Hutch, Johnson County, and KC, KCC.
Does the fact that Garden City, or is the fact that Garden City is on probation have issues with?
You know, hallelujah, they're no longer on probation. That news came out just in the middle of last week.
Good for them.
Any other questions?
Is, is this for limited titles?
I did notice a term of limit.
We review annually and it can be terminated any year, despite giving those before March 1st of the, thanks, school year.
Thank you.
And our last offering is 2017, is that right? They are on our campus?
I believe that is correct.
And is there any plan or discussion as far as implementing or partnering as far as emergency medical training services, EMT training, or paramedic training?
What we're doing with the EMT program is that was Twilighted at the same time as our fire science. We are partnering with the county to offer those classes in our training facilities for those students, if those are non-credit bearing, of course. We're encouraging those students to consider taking Gen Eds so that they could work towards their associate. So we, we are thinking strategically. We have a certain period of time to work towards restoring the EMT program and hopefully leading to paramedical training. I know Director Haley of the nursing program is very interested and supportive of our heading in that direction.
And if there's a significant portion, the fire science program has to have some basic EMT training as well as, as far as partnering with the, the plan. Thank you.
As you know, our goal is, we're looking at healthcare. That's one of our areas of expertise, I think. Obviously, the nursing program and branching out into other programs and healthcare programs. That's something that we can do and do well.
Do you think that would be a win-win, given some of the staffing that we have in the nursing program? Andrew Campbell, of course, has that certification and experience.
We've got a flight nurse, you know, that we have. As a matter of fact, just for you to know, and I don't think we've announced this, I don't think we have, Michelle Haley just got her PhD.
Well, congratulations to her.
And so if you get a chance to say hi, congratulations, please do, because that's, that's tough. And I think you've got a nursing bench. That's equally tough. That's a nurse educator. So we're very proud of her. And I think all our nurses are good.
Any further questions, nurses, MOU, or motion?
Did you say part of the fire science program is to have some EMT knowledge?
They, they have to take, most fire science programs, and don't quote me on the curriculum nowadays, it's been a few years since I took those myself, but required a, there's required components that also overlap with EMT training. They have to, of course, respond to training in some of those classes that would have also been part of an EMT program, which I'm sure Garden City is offering. They wouldn't be able to complete the program otherwise.
And, and, you know, EMT programs can be taken at the high school. So I know we've talked a little bit about that, but that's an opportunity for us to, you know, do, for those students to take the EMT at the high school and then, then do the pathways program. Other opportunities.
Speaking of first responders, congratulations to Congress for passing the funds for the other health problems for another 73 years or so. You asked for a motion. I would still move that we adopt the MOU with Garden City College regarding the fire science program.
Motion, trustee Moore?
Second.
Second, trustee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same side. Thank you. Dr. Fordy would like to now present the refinancing of the student union residential hall revenue bond, series 2013, resolution number 2019-14.
Last month, the board passed a resolution to allow the college to go out on bid, basically, for reduced interest rates to refinance these bonds. The bids came in today and last month, we estimated we could save maybe $350,000. Well, the bids came back today and it's a lot better than that. It's almost a half a million. It's 478,000, I believe it is. And so that information's in some of your materials there. I think it's on page. your materials there. Uh, I think it's on page maybe six, it's in a blue and white, but at the yellow, last column highlighted in yellow indicates the amount that we will be saving. So, the resolution tonight, or two action items, first is to accept the lowest bid by DA Davidson. Uh, they were the lowest bidder. And then to approve relation, resolution 2019-14, which authorizes the certifications of participation and related documents to complete the refinancing.
I had asked, uh, Mr. Curbs earlier if he had looked over if he needed to do any of this, and do you run these through his office?
I believe those are done through the bond council of the, uh-
Yeah, there's our attorney Gilmore and Bill, uh, who use and actually repairs the documents. I'm not sure if they see you include on those.
Sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't.
It'd be nice if they did, so that we could have his eyes kind of watching out for us.
Yeah, I'll make sure he's added to the distribution.
I did see the resolution in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Forde, or, Mr. Green? For the under, Mr. Green.
I was looking at my son to remember my grandpa.
Welcome. We appreciate it. Keep up the community college.
And thank you for the savings.
You too. Be careful, Mr. Green, because I could have your toes cut.
I'm gonna let it go. Discretion. But, but trying to be good stewards to this community and this college, I appreciate the savings of the money that you made, uh, amassed. And thank you for what you do.
And as I mentioned last month, we will be looking at, uh, some of our other bond issues and some of our other facilities in the future to see if we can take advantage of the lower interest rates in the future.
Is this your first time to work at community college? I know you worked for 443 before.
Yeah, and I'm a friend of financial, yeah. I mean, we serve colleges all over the state. Just did independent community college last week, actually, up in Kansas State. Not quite as much as you guys, but, uh, so, I, I was here last year for the, uh, refunding the, or new issue money for some software you defined as. I'm, yeah, I work with John Haas, who's probably the more familiar based.
I did want to also, I can't even compliment, uh, Glennon and his staff, as well as compliment, uh, Chris, uh, and her staff on, uh, you know, our, uh, our computer system is, is, if you read his memo, it's pretty fun, you know, with bailing wire and 57 Chevy, uh, put together. And so, we were able now to get our paychecks for tomorrow, or Thursday. And, uh, it was, they're compliments to these guys, because I can promise you, nobody in the country has our system. It's the oldest, most archaic system. As a matter of fact, the guy that helped us a little bit was supposed to retire in 94. And, uh, he was able to help us a little bit, but it was, uh, it was a little bit Nick and, Nick and Tuck for a while. So, true. I know when Christie called, she was a little concerned.
Yeah, I think if the system had not come up, I might have come back into retirement.
Motion to approve resolution number 2019-14.
Thank you, trustee Ray.
Second. We've got two motions. Can we do this differently?
Yeah, you need to approve the lowest bid, which is the DA Davidson.
Do we need one motion before the other, or?
Or can there be one motion?
Yeah, it can be one motion.
One motion to approve the, uh, awarding the bid to DA Davidson and the resolution. I amend my motion to also include, uh, to approve the lowest bid from DA Davidson Company.
Trustee Moore, you still second that, sir? The amended motion.
Well, I'm sorry, uh, yes, I would move to, uh, accept the amended motion, or the motion as amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Action item C, purchase of the 2017 Chevy Terra Transit Turtle Top Coach Masters of Kansas State Bank. Not going to do that again. Dr. Forde, you check that out?
Yes, back in April, the board approved, uh, college to lease two El Dorado minibus from Kansas Truck. Uh, they are being delayed. Sounds like a rodeo truck problem all over again, but, uh, they're not going to be delivered until November, uh, this year. It's causing some transportation problems. There is a vehicle available from, uh, Coach Masters, and we'd like towards approval to purchase this, at least purchase this, uh, Chevrolet Terra Transit, uh, Turtletop. You know, we're trying to move away from the unsafe, uh, 15-passenger vans and go to these, uh, Turtletops, which are more structurally, uh, safer for our, our students and coaches, students, right? And we have the money in our fleet, leasing budget to do this, so.
Once those other two arrive, are we just going to have too many vehicles?
No, we'll have actually a, a kind of a spare to have in case one of them goes down. So, that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
We, we've actually started, we've already started the process of getting rid of the 15-passenger vans out of our fleet. And this will allow us to start that replacement process, and hopefully here or the next year or so, we will be completely away from the 15-passenger vans.
How do we get rid of them? Do we put them up for bids, or what do we do?
The, uh, the first one that we just got rid of, a bid closed today on Purpleway, um, that we put out.
It was put up for bid and, and somebody purchased it, so?
Yes.
And what, what was the purchase price of that?
Uh, I believe it was right around $2,600.
And do you think that was a fair price for that vehicle, or?
Yes.
It must really be shock.
We're, we're talking about vehicles that are getting 140, 150,000 miles on them.
That's what, that's what I buy cars at. See, you got another one?
There will be some work coming up eventually.
Hey, let me know.
Your truck looked good with that today.
You mean my, my pickup?
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah.
My suburban is.
The taxes are very low. Low. I'm learning this, how you buy cars here. Low.
But with the reputation that those are not safe vehicles, that's really probably a good thing.
Yeah, but I got, I got that girls group to shuttle around Dot City, and I've had 17 girls in my suburban. So, I'll tell the police. You're right, you're right.
It's got to stay right here.
Maybe I'll get edited out in the, uh, Kansas.
As far as the longer term for, you know, moving away and moving into this, this realm, what is the anticipated update cycle or rollover cycle for these? I mean, I tend to believe in situations like this, it's better to have these possibly on a rolling basis and not, otherwise we're buying three new things every time we buy one. You know, every time we do it, it's, oh, we got three old vehicles that are totally shot, instead of, we have one that's at end of life, one that's half of life, and one that's new, you know?
The, the two that are on lease that are currently delayed will be on a three-year cycle. So, technically, this one will be the only one that we, um, I'm anticipating probably a six-year cycle on this one. Um, trying to spread its life out and, and get our money out of it.
Thanks. Any further questions? Do there rise any motion?
Uh, motion to approve purchase of, uh, lease purchase of the 2017 Chevy Terra Transit Turtle Top 15-passenger van, or both.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Action item B, the 2019-2020 athletic insurance, Disinger Reed, Starstone Specialty Insurance Company. A.D. Rup.
Thank you, vice chairman, Presley, uh, board trustees. Tonight, I come to you with the, uh, bid for renewal of our athletic insurance, uh, for the 2019-2020 school year. If you look through the information that was provided, uh, we worked with Disinger Reed, uh, they've been a very good company to work with, uh, for myself, as well as our athletic training staff. Um, they go out and bid, uh, this project, this project for, uh, a number of companies, and you can see all the bids were provided in, in this packet. With this, uh, the coverage, uh, that was bid is the same for every, uh, every company. In the past, uh, we worked with, uh, Berkeley Life, and, uh, their, uh, request was actually, came in as $3,000 higher than what, uh, the Starstone Specialty did. Um, if you will look at the claims history and our trend, uh, you will see a, a disturbing pattern, honestly. I hope it's, well, I hope it's not a pattern. You see a disturbing number. Our first year claims, you, you have a, uh, basically work off of a five-year claims history, and our first year claims for, uh, 2019 were actually higher than any of our, uh, two to five-year claims, uh, for the last few years. So, that's why we're seeing an increase, uh, in athletic insurance. Um, as you see, it's a, uh, it's a 7.9% increase. This includes not only our normal athletic insurance with the $500 deductible for each period and a two-year benefit period with that, but it also includes a $25,000, uh, cap on, um, catastrophic claims. So, any claim that goes over $25,000 goes into our catastrophic insurance, and that catastrophic is a lifetime, uh, claims benefit. Uh, so if you were to have a serious injury, uh, that would, you know, say something like a neck injury, that would, that would be a prolonged, uh, situation, that, that catastrophic will actually be a lifetime benefit. Um, so that's one of the things that, uh, while we went with the little bit more expensive on the catastrophic piece, uh, we did that because of that, because the other one was only a 10-year life, lifespan, and we felt like that was a, uh, with, you're talking to Chuck House with Disinger Reed, uh, felt like that that was a smarter decision for the college, in case you were to ever come across an issue like that. Um, but, we're working on, uh, we're working on some of these things to try to make sure that, uh, this is a one-year aberration and not a, not a pattern of what we're seeing. Uh, we did have a number of significant injuries this year, um, and we're looking at other options as well. Um, Chuck and I have actually talked about a, uh, accident injury policy for, uh, all students, not just, not just athletes, but all students, for it to be a possibility to buy, uh, that po, that, uh, policy. And, uh, we feel like that would probably help, uh, some of our claims as well. As right now, we do not require the, uh, an insurance, a primary insurance, even though it's a secondary, we do not require a primary. So, that's one of the things that we are looking at, uh, down the line, um, as a possibility. To give you a little bit of comparison, uh, because , uh, dis injury does work with a number of schools, uh, in our conference. Uh, to give you a little bit of a comparison, while you look at our total premium with the catastrophic and the, um, and the regular athletic insurance, uh, the, the total cost there you see comes to, on, almost $107,000 for the year, $106,918. Um, for comparison purposes, I will tell you that estimate, I don't know exact numbers, but Garden City's is, uh, close to $200,000, and Hutchinson's is over $400,000. Uh, so our, uh, rates are still significantly lower than, uh, other schools with similar sports that are in our region. Um, so I feel pretty good about what we're doing and the fact that our, our trend claims have been fairly low for five years. And, like I said, hopefully this is a one-year aberration, and that's why we're seeing the, uh, 7.9% increase. However, one of the things that, if you look at our premium history, you will also see that, uh, the number that we are looking at now is still lower than the number we had in 2014-15. So, we've made some improvements, and, and, uh, we're going back, uh, the more expensive way, as, as I believe all insurance is. I don't think it's just ours, I think all insurance is. And, uh, but we're trying to keep a gap on that, and trying to do everything we can in-house to, uh, to prevent that from going higher. So, uh, at this point, my, my recommendation, uh, I would respectfully request that you approve the 2019-20 premium for athletic insurance from Disinger Reed, Starstone Specialty Insurance, for the basic and catastrophic, uh, insurance at the cost of $106,918. If you have to field any questions.
I have a question, take it. All it doesn't say, is this medical insurance for injuries received in an athletic practice or event?
Yes.
Or on transportation?
Yes.
And is there any primary? They call this secondary?
No, the, the student would carry the primary.
And, um, do we have, do we carry special liability insurance for athletes?
Um, our liability insurance, the liability piece is actually rolled into our, uh, complete liability, I believe. Am I correct with that, Dr. Forde?
That would be covered like any other individual on campus.
Right.
But this is specific to-
Yeah, this is specific for athletic, and like I said, any, any claim that would go over the $25,000 mark would go straight into that catastrophic, which is actually, and I, I failed to mention that, is actually through mutual, well, Omaha.
I assume that Garden City is worried about that with the death of a player last year.
I, I think they're extremely concerned with that, at, at this point. Um, I also believe they've taken some very, uh, good protective, or first steps towards, uh, uh, remedying some of the issues that they had with that, but I do think that they're concerned there as well. Thank you.
Which sport had the greatest number of injuries or claims last year?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to say just off sheer numbers, I'm sure it was football, just because you have double the number of athletes. But, as far as injuries per cap, uh, I can promise you it was volleyball this year.
And most serious injuries also football or volleyball, you think?
Um, we had, I think, uh, as you look at it, we had probably the four injuries that would have gone into the catastrophic claim. Um, and you're talking, uh, two labor and tears, uh, one, one, no, excuse me, three labor and tears. One in football, one in volleyball, one in, uh, baseball, and, uh, an ACL tear in softball. So, they were stat over multiple sports. Any other questions?
I should look up concussion rates across, see what ones are highest.
Is it not football?
It's not football. You put someone up in the air.
Out of control. Start making more work.
Stop putting it up in the air. Just stay out of major league baseball parks.
Any further questions or motion in regards to that budget insurance clause?
I would move to accept the, uh, proposal, make a statement on our athletic director for the insurance.
Move by trustee Moore.
Second.
Second by trustee Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Andrew would you like to present the 2019-2020 marketing contract to KWC?
Yes, um, so this contract did not make it last month. Um, there was some, uh, wording that needed to be changed, um, that Mr. Curbs required. So, um, it went through, um, this is the same contract that I have with KSN, and that we've used probably since before I started. It is $1,000 per month. Um, over the course of the year, it's $12,000. Uh, they do, uh, use our commercial, our updated commercials. And I would really like to continue on, so I am, uh, respectfully requesting, uh, for you to approve the marketing contract between KWC, HTV, and Dot- contract between KWC, HTV, and Dodge City Community College for $12,000. We paid $12,000 last year. I have not upped it on the TV at all. I mean, they run our commercial a couple times a day, and, I mean, the more you have it, the more expensive it is, and with us trying to be across paper, radio, and TV, and now digital marketing, I'm trying to spread it as thin as I can. Well, that's good, that's good, good. Any questions?
All right, motion by trustee Green, second by trustee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. That completes our action items. We don't really have any unfinished business, and we have no new business. In moving to the consent agenda, we extracted, uh, personnel item number two for discussion. It's the band director employment appointment. Trustee Wright.
I have a concern with the, and I've, uh, expressed it here before, that we're asking this person to come in, and what we basically have done in the past, this last year and the year before, is we've got some violins, we've got some cellos, we're asking them to have a, a pet band, but we have almost no horns, and I just can't see a pet band sitting over there with cellos and violins. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing it, but then last year, when we talked about this early in the year, did anybody go over to the high school and say, "We need some new horn players to come over, and so we can have a pet band, a jazz band"? Do we have guitar players? Do we have a bass drummer? Do we have the things we need to, to have a pet band? And right now, we don't, you know, and, and so, and same thing with the marching band. You know, it's gonna be extremely expensive to, to have a marching band, but I don't think we should expect this guy the first year or second year to come in and get us a marching band, or to, I mean, hopefully he can attract someone over by his second year here, that, so he can have a jazz band, you know, or a, or a pet band, that's, uh, the athletic bands. But it's in, it's in what we're, his expectations here to have a marching band, and have a jazz band, and to have a, a pet band, and all this stuff, and are we really being fair to this person who's coming? I haven't met him, but are we being fair to this person to ask him to do this when he doesn't have the students or the instruments to have a pet band? Thank you for asking, and thank you for pulling this one out. This is exciting. You know, this is almost as exciting as a few years ago with the nursing program, where we decided to go ahead and pay them what they were worth. This person, obviously, you're gonna, you want to walk before you run. I totally agree. No, we're not expecting this guy to have a marching band right off the bat. The gentleman before, Kerry Cuplik, tried to get a young man to go to high school, did not do that. So this, this, this person, we're very excited, uh, I think they're, we're very enthusiastically excited by this person coming in and doing some great things, but no, we're not, we're gonna go baby steps, almost like what Garden City did. Now Garden City has a, has, has around eighty students that are in their band, uh, but they still don't march, but they've got eighty students in their, in their band. Unfortunately, out of that eighty students, about five or six of them are from Dodge City Community College, or Dodge City, and so, it's our fault for not ever going over and recruiting, and so, our goal is to start recruiting and, and go to Spearfield, you know, go, you know, go to all the different old schools here, and also to go, make sure you're, you're a con, a constant person going to that high school. I want that high school to know them. I want, I want the band directors to know them, and, and I think this gentleman, I, I mean, I have not met him either, but you guys did, and, and, and from what I understand, he's in, he's very enthusiastic, uh...
During, uh, the various points of the day that he was here, he said, "I've got a great idea for a uniform." Um, and did I tell you that on my way here, I wrote a, a college song? We transmutedly, uh, that we got nothing, uh, that he's starting at base bones, and he just sort of smiled and said, "It's always been that way for me," and, uh, he's able to, to build the program. So we were very open with him, I think made every effort to discourage him, uh, to know about him. Very enthusiastic.
Well, we had thirty applicants, man, thirty applicants. I mean, you know, two years ago, we couldn't get anybody. So, obviously, we did something right this time, and so I'm excited, he, he comes from Jarvis, uh, Jarvis College, uh, which is historically black, uh, and I think this gentleman will, you're gonna see, you're gonna see some fun things, and we're doing the same thing to our recruiting. I wanna get people that know what they're doing, get them out there, and support them, and that's what I wanna stall you, is support. I'm just, I just wanna make sure that he's not sitting out here by himself, that we have a president and vice presidents and a board who'll get behind this guy and, and get, get to these schools and help recruit. He can't do it alone, you know? And, and, you know, I don't mind holding his feet to the fire, but, and if he's enthusiastic, you won't have to do that, but he's, he does have to have support from the rest of us in order to turn this thing around from nothing to something.
He appears to, unlike our, our other previous band, our most recent band guys, he, he has a lot of successful experience in recruiting. Uh, he's also very eclectic musically, um, he does, uh, like classical, traditional classical music, but also jazz and blues. He's got experience with marching bands, and, um, he, I don't think he's gonna let us hold his feet to the fire without support.
Well, I had an extremely disappointing conversation a couple weeks ago. I spoke to a young woman who I knew had been in music here, had played an instrument, and I said, "Uh, looking forward to hearing you next year in the, in the Sports Symphony Orchestra." She said, "I quit. I'm not gonna play next year." And I said, "How come?" She said, "The back was falling off my cello. They refused to repair it." I said, "I know they have money for a new cello. I know they do, and I know they have mu, it, it won't cost anything to fix that cello." She said, "Well, I begged for it to be fixed," and she said, "I, I'm not gonna play next year." And so, we dropped the ball with that young woman, and I'm just, I'm just wondering how many others that we have, you know, we've got, we have money for instruments, let's, let's go across the street, and if kids don't have instruments, let's get them over here. And we had money, and we kept asking, and they ended up, the, the band director bought party gazes.
He, uh, he, uh, refused, he refused to repair the cello because he didn't approve of the storage facilities that we had.
Well, I know that, and they are inadequate for what we need.
I did, I did just wanna say that, I think we need to give a, a big shout out to Facilities and to Dr. Forky. Uh, if you haven't been at a band room, uh, since May, uh, you'll be very, very surprised. Uh, the orange shag carpeting is down to the walls, and it's been replaced with acoustic covering, uh, as well as some vacuum behind that. Uh, we've taken out the round carpeting that was probably installed with the building, uh, and it's been replaced with tile. It's color coordinated, uh, I know Facilities has started on the, the instrument storage area as well, and, uh, they're, they've taken out the sink in that area, and I believe they've installed like a humidifier that will maintain a constant temperature.
I think the Foundation is working on the, on the, on the fine arts.
The Foundation is already as well. I was gonna ask about that, you know, those instruments that are...
Also say that Fran and Carrie have been working very, very hard this summer, of course, someone had to move out all of that stuff from the band room. Uh, they've cataloged the vocal music, uh, they've ordered new storage units, and so, uh, I, I'm proud to be able to show, uh, Mr. Chisholm this new facility when he arrives. So I have to say, he seemed impressed with it the way it was, you know, sort of in the middle, uh, of its restoration. So, I share your concern about that particular student's disappointment, and that that was an issue with the previous, previous staffing. I don't believe we're gonna see that, uh, with this gentleman.
Well, I know that if we're gonna store, uh, quality instruments and keep them quality, we're gonna have to have the humidity temperature right in that room, and I don't care whether it's a, a grand piano, whatever it is.
We got it.
Uh, one thing, and I, 'cause I hadn't heard about the instruments, and so I asked for an inventory, and I was surprised that we did have a significant number, and...
Fran and, Fran and Carrie spent a significant amount of time this summer.
There's three baritone horns, two French horns, this sounds like, no, it's not the, Christmas version, six trombones, three trumpets, two tubas, three marching baritone horns, but two are in loan to Spearfield for some reason, and four cellos that are quote in okay condition, so, I mean, there's a whole list of, of different instruments, so...
Are those instruments in pretty good shape?
A lot of them are, but there's some that, that are, and so...
Some are being sent for repairs.
Yeah, so we will start budgeting, you know, some monies each year to, to, you know, increase the instruments that we already have, but it sounds like we've got a good start to begin with.
Dr. Forky, we do have some funding in the Foundation for repairing now the instruments.
Yeah, yeah, so some need in repair, but the instruments are there, some we can repair, and then some we can replace and add to, but, but I think we've got a good start, uh, on the instruments.
Man, I just add one more thing, excuse me for interrupting you. Trustee Wright, well, I share your concern, and, and one of the items on my list to talk with President Nolte with in the morning is, can we all get on the same page, uh, on our messaging with this hire? Uh, can we, can we establish some, some goals in the timeline? Uh, because there are a lot of people of interest, uh, in, in the bands and the performances, the different bands, and, and the, and the rate at which we're gonna build them, so, I think it would be very important that athletics, uh, business, uh, admissions, enrollment, uh, the president in my area, we're all on the same page, we're, we're all in agreement on what our expectations are within a particular timeframe, and that includes what Phil B. teaching this fall in spring.
Well, I think we have to have those expectations. I have two bandies from across the street that work for me part-time, and, and they both asked today, are we gonna, is the college gonna have a jazz band? And I said, "Well, I think that's in the works," you know, so...
Well, it, it, I was, I was in the band when I was in high school, and, uh, Blinney and I both came from schools that had large bands, and very, very good bands, and so, part of it is, is, you know, yours weren't that good. My mother. But, uh, I do, I do think it's very important, you know, it, it adds, it adds to the atmosphere, it also adds to the culture, and it's, it's fun to have a band, it really is fun, and then we're working on the same thing with cheerleaders. I know that Jake and I, I've got a guy that's, I'm, I'm trying to recruit him, he has five national championships, uh, in, in cheer, in dance, uh, he's got a squad of fifty, and so, uh, you know, so these are opportunities, and, you know, my, my goal is, um, is, is still some talent out there, there's some great talent out there, and I just wanted to hear.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page as far as supporting this guy and going out recruiting people and building this thing out there.
I would love to be out there myself, helping.
Give us a good pet band, not a marching band.
Dr. Nolte, how many, will there be any limitations on scholarships for the band?
You know, no.
Well, yeah, there will be.
Well, no. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, no. The cheer coach asked me, he said, "Well, how many, how many can I expect those scholarships?" I said, "As many as you want," so, because part of it is, is, and we've been given, I mean, when I first got here, fine arts, 'cause it's important to me, I said, "You go, y'all go out there and get as many students as you can," because fine arts is a very important part of, you know, athletics, the, the fine arts, the workforce and all these other things are very important also, so, I, I mean, I really, my, my heart goes out to, to the fine arts department.
I will say, the band is one of those areas that, uh, if they're from Ford County, we can give them a scholarship because it's not athletic.
Chris.
Dr. Nolte and trustee Malone, I, we do have some funding in the Foundation for instrumental scholarships, for music scholarships, it's actually a rather large, uh, family donation that's been there for a very, very long time, and we have usually about every year, ten to fifteen of those scholarships available, so...
Well, the, uh, we're gonna need, if we're, we're gonna need more than ten or fifteen.
We're hoping, we're hoping, because it, the fund is...
And if we have $900,000 set aside for whatever...
Exactly, the fund is growing, but, um, it has not been utilized over the several years, um, in the last two...
Well, yeah, right, they should be utilized, they should be utilized, hopefully they can, thank you.
Well, those kids across the street can get Ford County scholarships. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by trustee Wright.
Second.
Second, trustee Green, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you for your concern, and thank you, and thank you for your support. I play the drums, by the way. I get that. I try not to acquire enough, and, uh, they won't let me acquire, so governments are always just taking that.
Speaking of, all in one, uh, for our, uh, for our round right on into the executive session, the head counsel, Curves.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I recommend the board recess at the executive session to discuss due process proceedings related to the Robert H. L. Teeger contract pursuant to the attorney and client privilege, et cetera, in the Kansas Public Meanings Act, KSX 7543, 1922. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:05 AM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, vice president, Florida, vice president, should be included in the executive session.
I would move to accept, uh, Mr. Curves' recommendation to, uh, re, to convene an executive session, uh, for the reasons stated in the time allotted.
I didn't say nine, you know, five, thank you, I just, I was replaying that in my mind, I meant to say eight or nine.
That would be a little long.
All right, motion by trustee Malone.
So amended to, uh...
Curves until 8:05.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The board recesses until 8:05. Welcome back, we're back into the regular session from our executive session. There is action to be taken after this. The counsel, Curves, will be reading the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve resolution number 2019-15, a resolution repealing resolution number 2019-08, and accepting the resignation of Suzanne Hammond as a full-time faculty member.
Still moved.
Motion by trustee Corbly.
Second, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Trustee Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. And that leaves our meeting adjourned, thank you.